Justice for all.
Excellent. Well, do we have anybody with us online?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. So we have nobody with us. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So, well, that's all right. Board reorganization and committee assignments comes before public comment anyway. All right. So are we all, Mr. Willsmer might not be familiar with reorganization. Are you?
Um, I guess the general idea is where, just selecting who's going to be sitting on the other boards for reporting back.
Pretty much, yeah.
And officers of the planning board.
So, so basically the way it goes is, is we've got a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk. And those are the primary functions of the planning board, and then we've got the subcommittees. So, um, the way we, the way we do it is if there's more than one nomination, we'll take all the nominations to begin with. And then, once all the nominations have been made for one specific position, then we'll vote on who we want to be the chair. So if there's more than one, then you can only vote for one.
Sure.
Makes sense, right?
Also, oh, sorry, go ahead. No, I was going to note that capital planning is a three-year commitment.
It's a three-year term. So whoever's in the term, is that term up?
It is up this year.
This year is up.
Because Mr. Brenner fulfilled Ms. Bertram's, Mrs. Bertram's, uh, last year.
Okay. Okay. And, and on that note, I will mention that I have heard from, I believe in a member of the capital planning committee, but a, but a member at large that people know, uh, said that they would be happy to have Mr. Brenner continue on capital planning, if you so choose. And, um, if nobody else has a great, I, I just wanted to mention that. I heard.
Oh, that's very nice.
Good thing.
I fooled them well.
And, and, and me as well, because I, I'm ready to nominate you for the chair position. I think last year, I think you were ready last year, but you had the health issues. And I think they've gone away, right?
Uh, enough so. Uh, yeah. So actually, the, uh,
Thank you.
The conversation I was going to initiate with you, Mr. Chair, was that I am, uh, I am, will, I am happy to offer to, uh, take the role. I am not asking for the role. I don't feel the need to have that role to complete myself in some way. But you've done it a long time, and you're allowed breaks too.
I'm happy to put you in the hot seat.
Either way is fine with me.
Okay. Um, so is, is, are there any questions about the process, I guess? No? It's relatively straightforward. Um, and what I will say is, capital planning, as far as I know, is the only one that has any term to it. So all the subcommittees could change every year. There are certain subcommittees like MRPC, MJTC, and these others that are not so specific to the town, that are not as necessarily, um, important for the same person, or, or at least familiarity.
Continuity isn't as.
Continuity. There you go.
Critical.
And I, and I will say, um, that is specifically for the building reuse committee. Um, I'm not a big fan of being a member, but for continuity, um, there is a lot that's gone on, and, and I think they're at kind of the cusp of, of actually getting off the pot, so to speak. Um, so, and, and, and again, I'd welcome anybody that wanted to, to throw their hat in for that. Um, but, uh, other than that, and the agricultural commission, I'm, I'm a full member, so it, it makes sense unless anybody has a burning desire. Um, I'm, I'm a fully appointed member of that group, so it only makes sense. It's not anything extra for me. Um, whereas.
That's not one of the things in the reorg.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay.
That, that was, that's a throwback to the liaison days.
Okay.
When there were a half a dozen boards that people liaised on to.
Sounds good. I'm still gonna, I'm still gonna bring it up.
There's no reason not to. Just, it's.
Good. So, I guess, I guess that kind of lays the, I, I'll, I'll start by asking, is there anybody that has a committee position that they no longer want? I mean, if, if you're in a, if you've been for a year in a committee position, and you just, it's not a good fit, you don't like it, it doesn't work for your schedule, for whatever reason, now would be a good time.
I think Mr. Brenner was saying he doesn't like any of his, oh, not Mr. Brenner, Mr. Willsmer was saying he doesn't like any of his committees.
Oh, well. And we should give you some different ones.
Yeah, no, I, I am happy to pick up anything that anybody feels that they've, you know, has taken up too much of their time, or they don't want to continue doing.
Okay. Um, do we have any unfilled currently?
Uh, just the master plan steering committee. And that's because it's new?
New. Okay. Um, all right. Very good. So nobody has any desire to get off of their specific committee they currently have?
Mine specifically, no, but I'm doing three, so I'd be happy to give one away to, whichever one you'd like. Um, I think MJTC, my schedule works the best for it, because it's at 2:30 on Wednesday, so I don't mind staying with that one. But as far as MRPC or Stormwater, I'm, I'm good with either.
So Stormwater is typically seven o'clock on Thursday, the third Thursday. And I'm, I'm not familiar with MRPC.
MRPC is the first Thursday.
At seven.
At seven. So they're both, they're both Thursday at seven.
And not to sweeten the deal, but next meeting for MRPC is in August, and they're going to have a barbecue, so.
Uh-huh.
I'm just sweetening the deal, if you'd like to go to Lemonster.
We could all go to that.
Oh, yeah?
Right?
I, I believe so, yeah.
We could.
Your MRPC experience is way cooler than mine was during COVID.
You could have had a barbecue every meeting.
I did during some of them, I mean, solo, but yeah, at least there were some good dinners during them.
All right. Super. Um, so currently, I'm the chair, Matt Brenner's the vice chair, and, and Amanda Reed is the clerk. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So I, I would not mind being the vice chair to fill in, uh, or ad lib, however needed. Um, but regardless, so, um, I guess we can go ahead and get started. I'll, I'll take nominations for the chair, and I will go ahead and nominate Matt Brenner.
I would accept.
Or do we need a second on that?
Do need a second.
Okay.
It's important that you want to accept it, but we also do need a second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for the chair? Hearing none. Okay. I think we're good. All in favor of Matt Brenner as the chair?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Unanimous, Mr. Brenner. Um, I will take nominations for the vice chair.
I would nominate Matthew Allison for vice chair.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous for me as vice chair. Uh, now I'll take nomination for clerk.
I'm fine with still.
I was gonna say, I would nominate, uh, Ms. Reed for clerk.
Okay. I'll second. Um, any other nominations for clerk? Hearing none. All in favor of Amanda Reed as clerk? Please say aye.
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 Unanimous for Amanda. Okay, now we get to, so we've got open space, municipal building design, agcom is next. Is that the only one that's not?
Yeah, well, why don't we go through the list the way I have them in our reorg chart?
Oh, I don't have the list.
So it's MRPC. Uh, yeah, I, I think.
That's all right. Sure.
She forgot to put one out.
I'm here for you.
MRPC.
All right. So I guess, I guess Amanda was, was opining that she would not mind losing a third, a third or a second, or?
A, a third? Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. Either, I think MRPC or Stormwater, I'm fine with losing one of them. That's fine. And I don't mind keeping one of them and doing MJTC.
I think I'm more interested in Stormwater than, uh, MRPC.
Yes.
So we do that? Yeah?
You could take both.
I could.
Just, I'm just saying.
I'm going to at the moment.
I'm just saying. I love the honesty. I love it. Um, okay. And Amanda, you're still comfortable remaining?
Perfect. MRPC and MJTC, that's fine.
All right.
I see some of the same people in both meetings, so that works.
Nice. I would accept the nomination for MRPC.
I would nominate, uh, Ms. Reed for MRPC.
I'll second that.
Second? Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous for that. And the next one is MJTC. Take a nomination for that.
I would nominate Ms. Reed for MJTC.
Uh, I'll second that.
Second. Uh, any other nominations for MJTC? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. Um.
Oh, sorry. I can bring you?
No, I, I thought you went.
I'm sorry, it's capital planning next.
So capital planning committee?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Brenner, you comfortable staying on there?
Yeah.
Does anybody have a burning desire?
No.
Very good.
Which numbers?
I mean, it is interest, it is very interesting.
It's something you want to get on before you no longer planning board member. It is a, a unique experience.
But it, it's also intense, but I found it very worthwhile to learn. But I'm happy to keep in the role too. I'm not trying to push others into it.
So I would nominate Matt Brenner for capital planning.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous for capital planning. Open space ad hoc committee. I'm comfortable with that, but anybody has a burning desire, they're more than welcome to jump in.
I nominate, uh, Mr. Allison for open space ad hoc committee.
Okay.
I will second.
Second. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Stormwater task force.
I would nominate Mr. Willsmer for Stormwater Task Force.
I will second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye for yourself. Congratulations on your first committee assignment.
Thank you.
Um, municipal building design committee.
I would nominate Mr. Allison for municipal building design committee.
I will second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Another unanimous. I don't think we're going to have much contention here. Economic development committee. You comfortable with that?
Very comfortable to remain there. It's not a big lift committee. If someone else would particularly like it, but I've also, I feel like I've got to the point to have rapport with the groups. Either way is fine with me.
Burning desires? I'll accept the nomination.
Uh, I'll nominate, uh, Matt Brenner for the position.
I will second.
Moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Master planning steering committee. Here we go. This is brand new.
This is the contentious one.
Nobody has filled this yet, as it is brand new. Um, and I'm, 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 I'm foreseeing this position as being somewhat, uh, a go-between, as, as far as, as far as the planning board and the committee itself. Um, it would, I, I think that's, have you got anything really to say about this?
No, I mean, I, I think that's correct. I mean, the, ultimately, the master plan comes back to this group. Uh, whoever sits on it from this board will just be one of 15 in the steering committee. Uh, the steering committee will probably break down into multiple subcommittees that will do a lot of the nitty gritty work, and then come back for a more high-level.
Excuse me?
Conversation about each subcommittee's work amongst the 15. So it's probably a monthly commitment to start, maybe becoming bimonthly at one point as we get closer to wrapping up, plus whatever subcommittee work, uh, an individual commits to. Uh, the nice thing is you know it's a 24-month term.
Sure.
At the most, uh, with the intent of 2025 being when this goes to town meeting. Uh, so there's that.
So to follow up on what he said, is, it is a two-year, probably a two-year thing, but, but we'll reorganize again next year. And this isn't a two-year term, so it could be reassigned to a, a second party, or the same person could continue?
And frankly, at, at, at any point, someone could say, you know what, it's too much, and you can reassign. I think the idea would be whoever gets on would sort of see the term out to have some continuity, but also, I don't think there's an issue with switching. Some people have asked about having, you know, a rotating membership, which I think is more challenging than one person who does it for a period of time, and then gets off, and someone else comes in. Uh, but it will work regardless of how we do it.
Okay. So does anybody have, uh, in, a thought that they might like this? I'm not going to go to burning desire yet.
Um, I definitely think I'd be interested, uh, in getting involved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am interested as well. Um, just because I think the master planning process is pretty great and important. This, the more I learn about it, the more I like it. But I also think Mr. Willsmer would be a good choice as well. Think any of us would be an excellent choice, to be frank.
Sure.
Do we want to draw straws?
Rock, paper, scissors?
So there's been, this is unusual, somewhat unusual. There's, there's interest expressed by two people, and we, we don't have an odd number here. So I, I'd like not to make this contentious.
And, and the reality is whomever doesn't get the seat is not prohibited from.
Exactly.
Attending, you know, and participation might be, it, it's unclear, because it will depend on who's running those meetings, but I don't think I've been to a meeting here in town on a regular basis where folks who showed up and had, and, uh, you know, an actual interest have been turned away from providing participation. Uh, you wouldn't be a voting member, and you might not get as much intimate participation, but I wouldn't think that you would be kept on the outside, whomever is not the selected person.
I, I, I will add to that. I've heard the school committee does not have to take public comment, and regularly refuses to.
Okay. Well, you don't have to take public comment. You, you even don't, unless it's in.
I know.
In the guise of a hearing.
Why would I not?
Well, I didn't say that.
Why would the chair not? I don't understand why. They wouldn't. But anyways, um, so.
We can draw straws if you'd like, or however we want to figure. I'm fine with just about anything.
Sure.
How many, how many committees did you get?
Uh, I am on, uh, two committees, yes. Yeah. Uh, no, that's you. Um, I am on two committees, however, but I was looking at Matt, which doesn't help me in my notes, because I am in fact me in my notes.
There you go.
Capital planning and economic development.
Well. All right, so I.
But if, if Mr. Willsmer would very much like to serve, I'm willing to step, to step aside for that as well.
You could nominate him.
That's fair.
Make it a lot easier.
Yeah.
It would, but.
Yeah, no, that, that is fair. Uh, I nominate Mr. Willsmer for, uh, master planning steering committee.
I will second.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. Another unanimous.
It was amazing.
Super. All right. So, Mr. Chair, would you like to swatch, swap spots here and run the meeting, or, um, it's totally up to you?
Uh, I'm fine running the remainder of the meeting. Um, I'm, do we have to swap spots for that, or?
I don't, yeah.
Then I.
It's your meeting now.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Welcome. Should I get you a pina colada?
Enjoy.
Woo!
I meant him, he's on vacation now.
I just feel like I need a drink suddenly, so. All right. So that was board reorganization and committee assignments. So I see we are up for public comment. Do we have any members of the public? Uh, they will probably not be commenting then. All right. Next up, I see we have first right of refusal for parcel four, Lemonster Road.
That is correct.
Adam, I know you sent us some info on this, but I.
I did.
It was of a nature that leads me to believe there's more for us to know.
Uh, yes and no. I mean, it's, so, back a few, six, eight months ago, you did a first right of refusal for a 1.34 acre parcel that is associated with this parcel. Uh, that is on Sunny Hill Road, and it was to make three buildable lots along the frontage on Sunny Hill Road of this parcel. The remaining land is 24 and a quarter acres and stretches between Sunny Hill Road and Lemonster Road, uh, where the very obvious swamp is on the right-hand side, if you're heading south on Lemonster Road, just before you get to Sunny Hill, where they built that new, um, white house, that's sort of, uh, a cape and a craftsman blended together. Uh, so the proposal is for the current owner to remove the remaining property from chapter. Uh, I believe he's hoping to get two more house lots out of this 24 and a quarter acres. Uh, one of those fronting on Lemonster Road and connecting to the sewer in Lemonster Road, and the other back in. Laser pointer, because it'll be way easier than moving the mouse around. So, ah, it doesn't travel. Why you do that LED screens?
You can't, your cursor doesn't work?
It does. It just, uh, so here's Lemonster Road. Here's Sunny Hill. Here's the land associated with the original three houses. There's a dotted line here that is the wetland line. And this pocket here is where he intends to connect to the sewer on Lemonster Road. And this pocket here is where he intends to build the, I'll call it the fifth house, because we have three here, four here, this would make five. Uh, and I think there would be some reconfiguration of lot lines to provide for access through this frontage to this lot.
Through which frontage? I'm sorry?
Through the frontage on Sunny Hill.
Okay.
He has no ability to access here, because this wetland connects to this property line.
Mm-hmm.
And by creating a house lot here, or doing a division, he creates his own hardship, uh, and that would not qualify as a limited project under the Wetlands Protection Act, the way that I understand how limited projects work.
Now, is that because there's a guardrail there?
Uh, no, it's because when you create a situation where you have to cross a wetland, it's no longer a limited project, because you've created your own hardship.
So I guess I'm thinking that the wetland is on the other side of that line.
This is all, it, the wetland goes from here. This is a river.
Okay, so that thing looks like a road going between.
Is a river.
Is a river.
Yeah.
Is that Catacun mug?
Uh.
Yes.
It is. And so, you know, obviously, the wetland goes here. I mean, this lot and this area may not even be buildable, once you've put the Rivers Protection Act line in.
Well, do they even have frontage? I mean.
Well, here they have frontage.
Well, they grab it from the other lot.
And here, they're going to do some shuffleboating here.
Welcome to chair. So this is one of those things that, that they segment. They, the one point, the 1.39 acres, is that?
1.34.
The three part, and that's what they're going to grab frontage off of?
Well, they.
Create more.
Uh, well, they'd have to grab frontage off the 4.3 acres, parcel one, correct?
Correct. So, and, and I can give you a little bit of history on this, um, that this seems like they're just, like, picking away at you, little bit at a little bit. Uh, this property was purchased by a resident pre-COVID. And they had intended on building three homes, one for themselves and one for each of their children. They started doing research into what it would take to do it, and they decided it was something they didn't want to do, was too much. Um, they were happy where they were, and they decided to sell it. Uh, so this builder purchased, entered an agreement to purchase it. And in doing so, there was a chapter 61, I think it's just 61.
Uh, 61B.
Oh, it was 61B.
Yes.
Okay. Um, filed on this. And in filing the 61B, the owner believed that they had 32 acres, I think. And they saved five acres, 5.34 acres out of, or 5.64 acres, rather, out of that total, in order to have the three buildable lots that they were intending. When the builder was purchasing it, did their due diligence, the numbers didn't add up. And they were short 1.34 acres from what they thought that they had. And because of the way the lien for 61B was written, and the fact that there was no plan that went along with the lien, which is not a requirement of 61B, but gives everyone the ability to get on the same page by looking at it, uh, they found that they only had 4.3 acres out of the chapter land. And there was actually 25.59 acres in the chapter. And there was no way to fix the error, the Scrivener's error, without going through the process of right of first refusal. And the builder had intended at the beginning to look at what he could build on the lot, but in order to purchase it and meet the timelines of the purchase and sale, and, and the other parts, they needed to remove that 1.34 acres to make the buildable lots, so he could reasonably purchase it, knowing that he could build three lot, three houses. And he had always intended to come back and look at the lot to see what he could build on the other side, on the other land. Uh, so while it does feel segmented, and it is technically segmented, I don't think it was ever, uh, you know, I, and I believe that when he, oh, no, I don't know that he came originally, uh, but it was intended that that's what he was planning to do.
So, Adam, could you, uh, remind, remind me, please, exactly what 61B is?
Recreation.
Okay.
So it opens the land for the public to access trails and use it for passive recreation.
Okay. Okay, it's that one. Um, and we are discussing first right of refusal?
Correct.
On parcel two?
That is correct.
Parcel two only?
Correct. I'm sorry, parcel four.
Parcel four.
I, I, I apologize. I have the wrong map up.
I was going to say, the wetland line looked quite a bit different.
Yeah, it looked, I was, I was noticing that as I looked over.
Am I looking at the wrong map? Very good. Parcel four, okay.
So parcel four does have frontage on Lemonster Road.
Yes, it does.
But it's, it's, uh.
But, and it's adjacent to parcel one and three on Sunny Hill Road.
Right. But is this what we call elusive frontage? On Lemonster Road?
Well, you're not, you're not approving an A and R.
I understand, but if we were.
On Lemonster Road?
That's what.
Is it illusory frontage? Um, no. I don't know what the, I, this map isn't a scale where I can tell you what the distance between the wetland and the property line are. Uh, and again, I'm, I'm not a Wetlands Protection Act expert, but I believe that this may qualify for a limited project. It would, what the.
Parcel four? A limited project is a wetland crossing, right?
Correct.
Like you said, if they subdivided it, then they, they.
But they never would have had access to this. This always would have been, they're not creating hardship. In this area, so if he, if he creates a lot here.
Right.
He's not creating any hardship because the.
But if he created a lot further back, right?
Correct. If he was, if he cut this off and was trying to go this way, yes, but he's intending to, for these to be with that.
So he's already got three houses here?
Yes.
Limited project is only good for a single family house?
Correct.
Or as many as you can squeeze in?
I mean, it's, it's, it's only just an acre plus in that little corner. And I think by the time you subtract the wetlands out and look at how much upland you have. The, if you can build anything, it would probably be a singular lot.
So additionally, not through the chair.
Yeah, please.
Previous discussion, typically the open space subcommittee, which is a subcommittee of the planning board. Would, would have the first look at this and because they're, they're, they were formed specifically to have the qualifications. And they created a checklist for pieces of land that, that would be beneficial for the town to, to acquire. And I believe that checklist has six or seven items. And I'm, I'm thinking that this checklist might hit. Four or five of them at least. So typically we would take a recommendation from open space. And then, and then we would have a recommendation to select board. But because of the, the way we do our meetings, everybody gets a crack at it.
And I mean, the board can. Pause and do, make their recommendation at the next meeting. The, the planning board is a named entity. In the 61 legislation. So we receive notice by product of the statute. And we're reviewing it for. If there's a planning need for the retention of this parcel by the town or the purchase of this parcel. Now, what has happened in the past is the planning board had created the open space subcommittee. And has granted them. Equal status in review. And they have then gone and created a checklist that they work with. In order to provide comment to the planning board and the select board. There are times where the planning board has made their own recommendation. And the open space committee also forwards a recommendation to the select board. Often they're in line with one another. I know that in the past. Property owners have approached the, the Conservation Commission about this parcel. And the commission has kind of said. All the wetlands are already protected. It's more land that we would then need to manage. Why do we want this? I mean, there's the Rivers Act, there's Wetlands Protection Act, you can't build anything there, it's, you know, so. And whether the current commission will say the same thing or not, I don't know. But. And from a, a, a planning function, it would be up to this board to make a determination if there's a viable use. For this for the town. The other. And this isn't really a consideration because monetary. Value or funding isn't a consideration in whether the board makes a recommendation to exercise or not. But this is being filed as a change of use. Not under a qualified offer because the current owner purchased this. As 61 and kept it as 61 through the purchase. And the. Change in use requires the town to have the property appraised. And execute the purchase within the 120 day window. And again, that, that's not your, that shouldn't influence the way the board votes, that's more of a process.
But if we took too long, we could eliminate the town's option in.
Or you could just not get your say.
Okay.
So if you took too long and the select board was like, no, we really want this, they may just act without you. They don't need your recommendation, they prefer to have it.
And we have the ability to wait and defer our. Our judgment until we hear from the open space committee.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, you do.
And would that? Do we have reason to believe that waiting for that would significantly inconvenience the select board in some way? In their final decision?
I think they're fairly dependent upon them and us to make their decision.
Yes.
Unless there's a glaringly obvious need. But that's just my opinion.
Aye.
So the. We did receive notice, this is considered an appropriate submission from. The office of the select board. Town council has reviewed it. There is no date. In which they're looking for response, but they were told it is on our agenda this evening.
Okay.
So the 1:20 o'clock started when?
May 22nd.
And I'm wondering.
Days ago.
How, 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 how about the, the abatements and the snafu with the assessment crap? Are there still, is there still a backlog for assessments right now? Are you aware, I guess, it's not necessarily your bailiwick, but.
My understanding is that the contracted assessor. Who was reviewing the lakefront properties submitted their report. And that the board of assessors is currently. Reviewing lakefront abatements. I think they may have gotten through, I know they got through the first meeting, which I think was 150. And they may have been through two meetings, which would put them around 300, which would mean they would probably only have one more meeting left. And that's. Again, I, I try to watch as many meetings as I can while I'm working. And sometimes I just zone out and don't hear everything that people say.
Sure. But now the. Losing the word already, but you said that this would have to be mandatorily, you didn't say assessed, you said appraised. And that would be a different, because appraisal and assessment are different.
Correct, so we would hire a private appraiser.
So the, the two don't, is there any overlap between those two?
So I'm really stepping out of my comfort zone here because that's all like, it's like black magic, I don't quite understand it, I just know it's out there. But I think they're fairly similar. In the way that they're exercised. I know that assessors tend to be government employees. And they follow a specific detailed outlined. DOR. Created set of rules and data collection and that stuff. Appraisers, I think, do a very similar thing. But may have a different certification or approval process. And they. But I, I think they kind of do, like, I think it's the same, I think it's just a nomenclature thing.
So, but the backlog doesn't necessarily affect.
It shouldn't affect because we would, we wouldn't send our, we wouldn't send a town employee to do it, it would be a third party.
I'm just trying to wrap my mind around the process there, okay. So I would ask, I would look to the board for thoughts or other questions or general ideas about. We, it sounds like we certainly could, I mean, we could make a decision on this tonight, we could. Punt it down the field and wait for open space to give us their thoughts, when is the next open space meeting?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Supposed to be Wednesday, is it posted? Anyways, yeah, so. And if it takes another month, that's another 30 days. I would recommend that we table it, but that's just my recommendation.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say that too, wait until we hear back.
Yeah, open space is posted for the 14th.
Yes, good.
I mean, I, I share that thought as well, so Adam, if we were to table this, do we need a motion to do as such? Or do we just?
It never hurts to have a motion.
Alright. I would accept a motion regarding. Tabling this if someone wishes to make as such.
I motion to table this in the next meeting. Dependent on open space committee's recommendations.
I will second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, we can just do voice, right?
You don't have anybody on line?
Yep, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great. Alright, thank you. And we are, my apologies. We are on to board discussions. So we have master plan, solar bylaw and driveways and entrances here, is there anything?
So master plan, the public kickoff is Thursday in this room, 7pm. It's gone to all town employees, it's been posted on social. And now that we have a committee member, I will send out a, an email to the, I think we have six of the 15 appointed. And everybody's homework on the committee is to bring five people. I have had people tell me they're coming, I'm hoping that they bring five people too. Because the more people, the better. It will be a fairly informal session. Getting to know the process, getting to know the players, starting the visioning. Go from about seven to nine.
And this is a meeting that others could theoretically attend.
This is, this is like bringing everybody who can, wants to come.
Okay.
It's, this is a hoedown.
Wonderful. Alright, this Thursday at 7pm for those watching at home, instead of watching on YouTube, you could watch in person.
You could participate.
Wow.
All those things you get to write in the comments, you can say in person.
If you dare.
Nobody does that.
Exactly.
Do our, do our YouTube, YouTube videos get, because I guess not our YouTube. Do the YouTube videos of our meetings get many comments?
You know, I've never actually watched our meetings, I live them, so I try not to go back and watch them.
Yeah, that might be something we should look at at some point.
So often, somebody says something nasty and then they'll get some comments, but I think that's the only time I've ever seen them.
Because it dawned on me like there could be members of the public saying something, thinking that's a.
Monitored.
Monitored, yeah. Which, I mean, they're wrong, but. Doesn't mean that they, they just don't feel ignored regardless.
And back to the master plan, the consultants were in town on Thursday of last week doing their interviews. To gather data for public services and facilities and other chapters to. Begin, you know, having a, framing sort of what they're hearing from people to give them. Some ability to really figure out what's, what's happening and Thursday will be the opportunity to really. Get voices heard and start to lay the groundwork, it's not gonna be the last by any means. There is a survey available. There are posters at town hall, senior center, library, Ritter, and again on social with a QR code. And there are also hard copies of the survey at all those locations. And if somebody, for whatever reason, can't get to those locations and they want to call me at the Ritter building or send me an email. Which if you can't get to those locations and I can send you a hard copy survey, you can send it back to me, I can email it to you, any of those things.
Great. Thank you, Adam. Anyone have anything else to say about master plan?
Alright, I do have a question. We have, we have, through the chair, we, we have, we have six people that are filled spots?
Yes.
Can you tell us who they are or do you have it off the top of your? I know Karen Menard.
That is one of them.
From Parks.
So master plan steering committee, Mr. Bob Pease and, actually Rich Bersh from the Conservation Commission. Karen Menard from Parks. Evan Waters from Finance. Deb Lincoln from the Council on Aging. And Carol Archambault from the School Department. And Bob Pease will deputize Rich Bersh in the event that he's unable to attend.
Nice, so that sounded like three chairs. Carol, Bob and.
Yeah, I mean, I think Bob will be a backup, but Carol, Bob, and I think Evan is also the chair. Deb may be the chair of Council on Aging.
She may be, yeah. Nice.
I mean, and, you know, these are folks we see around and, and that's not a bad thing and they also know a lot of people, so.
Exactly.
They have the opportunity to really help people engage. And I'm hopeful that. As we really start to dig into this, the consultants are, there are already strategizing ways to. Engage people digitally.
Good, great, earning their money.
Yeah, they've been fantastic so far. I think you guys made an excellent choice.
Super. Besides being gratifying for us, that's, that's just good to hear.
No, every time I, I speak with them, they're energized and they're excited about it and they're, like, they're in it, this isn't like. They're not just filling out forms and creating templates.
Nice.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, do we have anything on the?
I don't have solar and I'm, I'm really rough sketch on the driveways and entrances.
That's fine, alright.
If I may.
Yes, absolutely.
On the solar bylaw, Miss Me and Lynn Mann was the one who brought that?
Yes, she was.
She, she, she caught me at the farmer's market this Sunday. She did, she, she's, she's not sure. Aside from the, aside from the last email basically saying what you were looking for, she's not sure what you're looking for.
I'll reach back out.
So I, I, I think, I, I think she, she has good intention, but I'm not sure she's really got. A firm thought on what she was suggesting. Is what it sounded like to me. She's very open and she's, she's energized.
Yeah, she is, and she's great to talk to, I, we've, the past couple of months have been busier than I wanted them to be. We are trying, we filled two and are filling a third position at the Ritter, so. And we just applied for a grant for design work on Lemonster Shirley Road. To improve the intersections at Fort Pond and Reservoir. And to look at addressing the geometric.
Why are we doing that? We just, we just permitted an eight acre building and they're, part of their permit was, I'm sorry, through the chair. Part of their permit was. Was based on them inputting dollars if there was an increase beyond what they said, so why?
Well, they haven't occupied the building, so this isn't.
I know, they have three, wasn't it 50, 75 and 100, they were gonna do three different studies?
No, they provided a 10% design and they were going to monitor for 12 months post occupancy. And if the variance was greater than. I wanna say it's 15% of the estimates, they, there would be financial penalties.
I disagree with that, my understanding was that there was at least two, maybe three different points at occupancy levels of that building that they were gonna reevaluate, but anyways.
But it was a 12 month study and they were. Well, I, I can look back at it, but this is, this is more about the corridor in general than that specific development.
You could use it, honestly, yeah.
The intersection at Reservoir Road is.
Hideous.
Bizarre?
Hideous, it's always been.
You're, you're looking at the sky when you pull up, if you try to turn left, so you have to use the steering wheel to kind of pull yourself up to look down the road. The crossing traffic with Keating, the, the, the rock outcropping, I mean, there's more issues than just the additional traffic and I think what the town's trying to do is. Leverage state monies to improve that corridor because I think as we've seen, Keating is prepared to and. Is the Keating family, not the Keating Corporation, is starting to divest of land.
I have another question on that.
Go ahead.
Where did that, where did? Where did that, where did that impetus come from? How, how did that come about?
The improvement?
Yeah.
Um, there has been talk about, um, development across the way.
Okay.
Uh, there has, there was interest in land beyond the railroad bridge that fell through.
Did this come through planning board? It's come through select board? The town manager dreamed it up?
The, the town manager and I were, were looking at grants and, and it was, it's a design that's available.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Uh, it's a no-match grant with, from the town.
I, I would encourage anyone who has not driven that reservoir, Reservoir Road intersection to consider doing so at a particularly busy time of day with full awareness.
I spent a lot of time at that plant. I've been down and around. It was terrible.
It's a
Scary.
It's an interesting time.
All right. I, I, I look forward to the results of this grant because, boy, howdy. All right, thank you. With all of that, we are on to minutes approval. This will be the minutes, uh, and only the minutes for our five twenty-two meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Once people have reviewed it, I will be happy to take a motion.
I'll motion to approve the minutes for the planning board meeting from May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
A second?
Sure.
Great. Um, in that case, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Wonderful. I don't have to say I'll oppose if it's just
Nope.
Great. Okay. Moving on to committee reports. We have open space ad hoc committee.
Uh, no meeting to report. Our me, next meeting is, uh, two days, Wednesday.
Okay. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
We have not met since our last meeting and I have not heard anything on a future schedule, so I, I don't know if, when the next meeting will be.
Okay. Agcom.
Agricultural Commission, unfortunately, we, uh, I have, uh, our next scheduled meeting will be this Thursday at seven when we're having this, this thing here. So, maybe, uh, and I have to post it tomorrow, so possibly, um, uh, let me talk to some members and we'll see if we might just join this group and reschedule our meeting, but there's no report, sorry.
Okay. No worries. Capital Planning Committee has not met wrong time of year. Economic Development Committee has not met since our last meeting. That is correct, right? I mean, you cocked your head first, but there was no meeting I was
No, you were at the last meeting we had.
Yeah, okay, great. All right. Stormwater Task Force.
We have not met since our last meeting and we're not meeting this month.
We're not meeting this month. We're skipping to July.
All right, MRPC.
MRPC, we met last week on Thursday, um, mostly talking about MRPC's budget. They're kind of hitting that one hard constantly. Um, uh, just changing funds around from different accounts to cover future, um, retirement, which is you, I remember you asked about that.
I was about to ask if there's been any word about the legislation and everything that they were advocating for.
As far as I've heard, nothing about that. I haven't heard anything about them not being able to cover people's retirement benefits, pensions, however they phrase it. Um, this was simply just, we're moving money around to make sure that we can cover them in the future.
Okay.
Uh, but other than that, nothing really to report.
Great. MJTC.
MJTC, we meet this Wednesday, so we have not met since the last meeting.
Very good, and I wish, I want to wish Mr. Willsmer a happy final silent committee report session. And director's items.
Just the, the grant, which we sort of, I slid in beforehand. Um, and, you know, uh, if you haven't met, uh, Annie, our new board admin, uh, if you're in the area, swing by, say hello. She's got big shoes to fill, but she's, she's doing a shift already, so, uh, you know, we'll, we'll get there. She's, she's got all the, all the tools and now it's just getting through the, getting comfortable and learning process, so.
Great. Wonderful. Um, meeting scheduled. Do we say anything here? Do we have, I, I, it's on the agenda, but
Yeah, no, it's, it's really just an, an update on, you know, making sure that everyone knows we meet at six PM. We meet at Town Hall and what's going to be on the agenda.
Are we supposed to say that out loud? I mean, you just did, so I'm sure it counts, but are we supposed to say that out loud during the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, Ms., Mr. Allison has, has every, every other week for the past few years, so.
Continue that, then. I'm fine with it. I'm just, see, I'm not actually very smart. I just am pretty, so.
So, so, if I may?
Yes.
You are the chair now, so if anything that I've done in the past you don't like, you don't have to continue. And anything that I haven't done in the past, if you did like, you can start.
Yeah.
So.
I, I
Just, just letting you know.
I appreciate that, and I will be frank, I have run enough organizations. I am very comfortable with that. But I'm also, I've run enough organizations that I am even more comfortable when things aren't broke. I do not feel the need to start fixing them.
Sounds like a homeowner who's bought an old house.
Funny enough. Yeah. Um, all right, ongoing items. Do we?
Uh, we've updated the master plan. Uh, I'm working on the draft of the Aquifer Protection District. I'm looking to try and have those both done to sort of dump on the desk of the, um, building commissioner to get his notes. Uh, also, uh, we will probably be working on the floodplain bylaw as well. Uh, I've been notified by FEMA or by DEP that we have new flood insurance rate maps for the town of Lunenburg. They did not do a new study. They just took the old study and they put it into GIS, so now there's pretty pictures and colors that go along with it.
Nice.
And if anybody has ever looked at the flood insurance rate maps from the eighties, they're a trip, because there's like a quarter of the roads in town and just these blue blobs. And they're like, here's your flood zones. Go try and figure out insurance. And now it's all digitized and you can see the house on the aerial photography, so um, I expect we'll be busy with LOMAs for the next couple of years, because the last community I was in, we did, we went through this and in two years, I processed eighty-one LOMAs. Because all of a sudden, these, these maps come out and the mortgage and insurance companies go, oh, look at this. We can actually see where our investments are. And they just send out letters left and right. And so, um, the surveyors start getting real busy. There's people like, I've lived here for forty years. It's never flooded.
What is a Loma?
A letter of map amendment.
Okay.
My apologies. It's the, the formal instrument that you file with the federal government to remove your property from a flood zone A.
Okay.
And essentially what you do is you hire a surveyor and like, if the floor is the flood zone and the table is your house, the surveyor surveys it and says, look, come on physics. Water can't run uphill. And they just certify the elevations and all of that. And they put together a form and you pay them a bunch of money and most people say it's probably about half the cost of the first year of flood insurance in a, in a, a floodplain A, so it's worth it to most people. Amanda's shaking her head like she's done this before.
I am so sorry.
So, if I may ask?
Yes.
So, our, our firm, I believe, is from eighty-seven?
Yes.
The last time?
Hmm.
Nineteen eighty-seven. And so, they recently redid Concord's, Concord Mass, which is, 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 is a historic, uh, lake, basically. But their flood elevation rose almost two feet. Almost two feet. Um, so, I guess, I'm, I'm curious, is, is it a statewide digitization that they've done? Is that what it is?
Countrywide.
Countrywide, okay.
They're, they're in the process of doing it across the entire country. And some areas are having new flood studies done. I believe the Nashua did. Um, and Concord may have gotten that through, does Charles run through Concord?
Hmm, I don't believe so. I think so.
But, because that, I, I would expect they would have done it on the Charles as it comes from the west to the east. And I don't know if they did the entire Charles River Basin maybe, and that's why Concord was included. Anyway, yeah, we, we were, this has been in the works since pre-COVID. And, um, they told us that Lunenburg was not getting a flood study. They were just digitizing the maps to update their quality.
Adam, I want to say thank you for exposing to me a huge piece of Massachusetts ge- geography knowledge I am apparently lacking. Because I sat here and went
Is the Charles in Concord?
I'm like, I have no idea where the Charles goes unless it's Boston and Cambridge. And outside of that,
I know, I know it's in Hopkinton.
That river. Oh, is he, that's already more than I knew. I just didn't have a conception of where the river is otherwise. All right, anything else on ongoing items?
Nope.
Okay, public comment.
Ooh, I should probably see if we have any.
Yes.
No.
Okay. Board comment or concerns? I have, uh, two comments quickly. One is, uh, I, I have full faith in Mr. Allison's ability to be vociferous. And if that sounds, uh, like a negative statement, no, I mean it absolutely as a positive statement. And, um, now that I'm apparently chair of the board, I welcome and encourage your thoughts at the meetings. And I know comments go through the chair, because that's how it works, but, uh, you don't, if you're wondering where my stance is on people speaking, for the love of God, please do. And secondly, now that, uh, Marjorie is officially retired, correct?
Correct.
Yes, I, I, on behalf of the board, just want to say thank you again for many years of amazing service to the town. I hope her, I hope her next chapter as being a granny goes smashingly. And nothing but the best for her. That's all I got. Anyone else?
Likewise, Marjorie will be soily missed.
All right. In that case, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Um, I, I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Does that count as a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and we're done.
Now you're done.
Nice.